The living is the dogs always.
You want to go ahead and start?
No, no.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started guys. Um, everybody take a seat. We'll go ahead and our time is five thirty-one. Let the record show that all councilmen and councilmen present without Ms. Trujillo. She will be absent today. Okay, we'll go ahead and do, um. Education by Ms. Laca and predilection by Councilman Dave. Why do we stand?
Father, we come to you asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Help us work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. I recommend to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Bill, may he see you. Okay, we'll go ahead and go on to a public comment. See if there any people come before the comments. Sorry, man?
Mayor, Council, I'm Lucas Chavez, citizen of Pecos, Texas. So I wanted to just start off first with commending everyone that expressed their concerns at the last council meeting. I love seeing everyone partake in a council meeting for once and seeing a community of downtown business owners come together for their cause. I would love to see that participation in every event the city throws together, especially say something like the Halloween trunk or treat located in our downtown this year, which I don't remember seeing any of those businesses that express their concern about back end parking out there supporting events like that thrown by the city. But for the sake of the comment, though, I have to address the concern. Yes, change is scary for some elderly folk in our community. I talk to my grandma and my dad every lunch about what we're doing here at the city. Why isn't this happening and why aren't we doing this and that? Every day I have to explain that, yes, Pecos has an elderly community that needs tending to by addressing sidewalk reconstruction for ADA accessibility, but these are projects we can shoot for with feedback from our community like we saw at the last meeting. Like Mr. Saldana said, it's the last meeting. Imagine if we had this kind of turnout to all the council meetings. If I look behind me right now, I see a bunch of empty chairs. People need to speak up, but not only when something inconveniences them, but also when they have ideas to improve our community or appreciation when something gets done. But when it comes to change around Pecos, we have to take into consideration and address the need to keep businesses coming in and make Pecos appealing to people wanting to live here and grow here. We should focus around our visitors from out of town and the younger generation that will make Pecos their home. By building a recreational outlet like cycling, safe routes that venture across town, we are still, we are building an outlook for our city that is progressing and not dying with the times and staying complacent with what we have. When people visit our downtown, they don't say, wow, look at those sidewalks. They look and see it has some rundown buildings with a few businesses, but in my eyes, none of that would make me say, that's a neat downtown and I want to make maybe come back and see it. The city of Pecos is changing and that is thanks to a council that notices changes we are making here at the city. I noticed, I noticed who came to the council meeting and it seems that the ones that came were in it for their business purposes and not that of the community. I, for one, who has grown up in Pecos, left, came back, I've noticed change in what is taking place. If you haven't noticed what's changing in Pecos, then you obviously are out of touch with the community that is growing here. A growing younger population that wants to have more recreation, the building of ball fields, recreation center, a social club, and upgrading of our parks across the city, and more with plans that Mr. Sorenson has put into place. With the propositions put into place that were mentioned throughout the community improvement plan that we had meetings for three times specifically, and I attended all of them, I don't believe I saw one of those downtown owners at one. You can't make the claim that it didn't fit your schedule when you obviously can make time to speak your mind about back end parking in front of your business when it pertains to you. Yes, this might upset some, but I can't stay quiet when I have, when I know Pecos has more issues than answers. We're trying to address these by asking our community to be more active like our downtown owners and help guide us like we asked at the community improvement meetings. I don't want what happened at the last meeting to blind Pecos from the bigger picture. We have on our city page a map highlighting the propositions to identify more than just back end parking, but community wide improvements all over Pecos. I just want to reiterate myself when I say these propositions are more than just implementing back end parking and bicycle lanes, but overall improvements across the city. To be more informed, we as citizens need to inform ourselves and look for solutions rather than just complain and do nothing to help solve our problems. Fun fact, on that day of the council meeting, I went for a bike ride after my workout. Weather was beautiful and I noticed people walking around bicycling down Texas Street. Granted, Texas Street is probably the best paved road around for cycling with the sidewalks and space, but still, people are wanting to get out, they're wanting to have a recreational outlet. So needless to say, please, Pecos, don't let the mentality of a few get in the way of some good change that can take place and has already taken place. And go check out the propositions on our City GIS website for more information on what will be on the ballot. We need our business owners to work with us and contribute by letting us know how they feel, just like last week. But not only when it pertains to their own interests, but for everything involving our community to improve together, not by pointing fingers, but by guidance and advice, our community can come together to see Pecos for what it can become instead of being afraid of change and becoming part of the change. Thank you, Council.
I'd like to thank Mr. Chavez for speaking his mind. This is what we always wanted. Mr. Chavez's dad went to school with me, we graduated back in seventy-one, and that's what we always tossed around. Our kids have to come back, back to Pecos, support it, work for it. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And your, and your family.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Is there anything else?
Mayor, Council, I received a public comment via email and I'm about to read that out loud. That was submitted by Nancy Lopez, she's a Pecos resident. And she stated, I ask this city of Pecos to come together and submit a request to our governor for ADA. Our law enforcement must be equipped with enough resources and personnel to better protect our neighborhoods. Some of our officers are currently being sent to South Texas while Reeves, tax dollars continue to pay their salaries. We cannot afford to lose our officers. AU police station at the minimum should rise as fast as that immigrant facility did. The three parts of neighborhoods which are within walking distance need protection and surveillance. An increase in crimes including break-ins is expected. On the same day that ten illegals were on the run on an early Monday morning, buses of illegals arrived later that day. Our city felt to notify us, the city, town of city Facebook didn't make any announcement. No messages through the alert messaging system, no mass warning to get our kids inside above our doors. I would like to suggest that the city notify us of such events. Our resources are limited and we shouldn't wait for a tragedy to strike to become aware. I'm seeking resolutions to our basic needs which includes our water and our trash. The bureaucratic policies and disrespectful manner in which city employees deal with folks who make fair complaints need to stop. We're paying for services that are not being rendered. I ask that those with authority to clear house do so. If you're in a position that you seek only to pursue your personal interest, please resign. If it is the best interest of Pecos, if that is sincere intention in your heart, please vacate, vacate your positions. Thank you and bye-bye. That's all.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, this is Christina Chris Mari. First, I want to, oh, excuse me, Christina, thank Oscar and Alex for organizing the lines, all the forks for organizing the fantastic future extravaganza. It was a lot of fun. Yeah, a lot of people come out to support the cause, volunteer, and a lot of people come out to participate. So it was a really great effort, it was a great day, it was beautiful weather, it was fantastic and that stuff. I absolutely want to, I don't know where he's hiding, but I wanted to recognize him for all the effort he put together. Is he straight up here? Um, the other thing is, as a volunteer representative of Frontier Casa in Reeves County, it is Child Abuse Prevention Month, April is. Casa wants as many volunteers that want to support and help their community, don't have that experience, don't have a background, they just have to want to help the community and help them. So the information is available on their website. They were trained, they will do all the background, they will handle everything, but they are looking for volunteers in this community, so we should scan there. Thank you very much.
Do you know where they're going to have their office?
I know they were trying to get some space from the county, so they were still working on that. There's still kind of a mission where it's going to be. Um, I haven't talked to a person since last week, so I don't have any updates, but I can find out.
Yeah, 'cause I know the last time we had that conversation, we were kind of looking at the old hospital once. They kind of were willing to their new ones, and I know the Congress were looking at that. I'm sure they needed like something now. Thank you, Matt. Anything else? Okay, we go ahead and go on to non-consent. Uh, we'll go ahead and E one through the minutes of the March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty, reschedule your city council meeting. E two, approve the minutes of the March fifteenth, twenty-one, Pecos, four B Economic Development Corporation meeting. E three, approve adventure reports. Give me all one of the details, please.
Ken, did we ever get, Ken for PDC? Did we ever, well, that was, did the PDC ever sell the property in between West Texas Main Credit Union and the, the new county facility except the?
No, ma'am, we have one person luckily that is looking at about six eight and six feet, uh, but no, there's dog markets.
Okay. So is it less promising maybe?
Uh, you've seen it on social media. So, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and how much property does the PDC have?
Along the interstate between Reeves County Annex Number Two and WCCU, we have five point five acres. And then directly behind Pilot, on the other side of WCCU, we have three point oh four acres there. And then on the eastern side, the plot that we got from the city is point nine acres, so total about nine acres.
Okay, in that area?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Little motion to approve.
I'll make a motion, Mayor, to approve the consent of gent pass present.
Okay, second?
One second.
And a motion by Councilman Davis saying give my Councilman Laca to approve the minutes of March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty, reschedule regular city council. Approve the minutes of March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-four, date not confirmed. Corporation meeting, approve the miniature report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say aye. Motion carries. Okay, we go on to F, non-consent. Discuss, consider, review, and approval of the Pecos Four B Economic Development Corporation annual audit for two thousand nineteen, two twenty. Mr. Winkles?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to speak to you tonight. Wanted to give you the results of our two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty audit. As you know, our year ended on September thirtieth of two thousand twenty. We had Ms. Kimberly Knox of Boucher Young and Morgan out of Stephen, uh, excuse me, Granberry, Texas. She was in my office on November seventeenth and eighteenth, literally forty-five days after the end of the year. She came back to give my board the results of that audit last month. Just wanted to go over a few items that won't bore you with the entire audit, but our sales tax was down one point one million, down to seven hundred and six thousand, which did, our other revenues, which is our oil and gas and our test track income, fell from two hundred sixty-two thousand down to two hundred and one. Our expenses went from one point three million in two thousand nineteen up to two point six, but I would remind you that between y'all and us, we spent one point eight million dollars over in Meadowbrook, so that was expected. Our net loss was quite substantial when you look at it, but it was covered by what I refer to as prior year retained earnings. We had a net loss of one point five two million dollars, but again, that was covered with the money that we had made in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. If you remove Meadowbrook, we had, uh, our cash, as I kept reminding my board each month, not to pay any attention to the cash in early nineteen as I was about to spend it. Our cash went down from three point four mil to one point six million. But again, our assets went up, they almost doubled from eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars of land assets to one point six million. The last thing I will leave you with before I answer any questions is the letter from Ms. Knox. We noted no transactions entered into the corporation during the year for which there was a lack of authoritative guidance or consensus. All significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statements in a proper manner and period. Financial statements disclosures were neutral, consistent, and clear, and we encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with the management and performing of our duties. So we got a good, uh, good report for two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, and I would be willing to answer any questions if you took time to, to read it like most of my board members might have or not. It was a good, it was a good audit. We have, uh, that's the one thing I am proud of, uh, what it took over from Mr. Oglesby. Uh, we've had a good audit each and every year.
Any questions?
Have you sold, I, I read on, on your, you sold, you sold more property at the Meadowbrook?
Yes, sir. We originally sold ten in October. Uh, we came back and sold four more to Cruz in January. Uh, we approved five more for in, in March, and my board has another five to be approved this month. So, uh, total altogether, by the time that my April board meeting is, we will have twenty-four lots under contract, ten houses already on the ground. So yes, it's coming along quite nicely.
Good. Any other questions, Mr. Winkles? Sir. Little motion to approve.
I make a motion, we, we approve the, uh, the final audit summary letter and the final financial statement for the center by Mr. Kim Winkles.
Okay, a motion by Councilman Smith, again by Councilman Laca to approve, uh, the revision approval for the Pecos Four B Economic Development Corporation annual audit report for two thousand nineteen, two twenty as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Winkles. Thank you. We're going to have two, discuss updating lighting and AD handicap ramps downtown area.
Not, but I wanted to sign up here just to discuss last meeting, we had a lot of people that were in the trees, uh, whose responsibility is for handicap ramps. So if you have, I think it's not before we left the meeting, the trees are ours. And you know, anything from the curb up is a, is a customer, is owner of the building, but from the curb down is ours, so the ramps should be ours. So we should see what we can come up with some funds to, especially the, the trees, to trim the trees. You know, if we have to get a text message from Mexico to clean some of the lot, some of the trees off the lines to better trim the trees in a safe manner, you know, to do that. I used to do it myself. And then of course just lighting, and I don't know if we can find funds to put some ornamental lighting downtown to beautify.
Councilman, uh, the downtown is one of the items that's included in one of the propositions. If the council desires, we can go forward with coming up with some engineering design and cost estimates for that even before. The council did approve a pre-funding agreement, um, that that could be paid back to the bond if desired. Or the, the council could also determine to pay for such a project out of cash reserves.
You know, however, if the vote doesn't go the way we wanted to, you know, we still need to find a way to, to do, to beautify downtown, make it more inviting, you know, so. And lighting, I don't know, I know ornamental lighting is expensive, but if we could, uh, you know, with, with KMP to change the pieces, older fixtures and put the newer style fixtures out, you know, helps something, just to beautify, get it more lit up for security reasons.
Who owns us downtown, the streetlights?
Streetlights are not, no, we, TNP, we maintain them, we, you know, this chief and their patrol officer are real good about turning to this. Sometimes we can, sometimes monthly, we're trying to be proactive, our guys, you know, we, when you're out and about and you see a light out, you know, don't have to wait for an order to, to fix it, just in the morning come in and you know where to jack, go fix it. And they go for any citizen of Pecos, if you see a street light out, call it in, text from Mexico, call city hall, the, the police department, you know. They're real good about turning it in to us and we'll take care of it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, Council, put on that. You have any question?
Oh, no. I'm sorry.
So my handicap ramps would fall on there because of our?
Well, the ramps would be on our end, that's what I was discussing.
So.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
The, the way that the ordinance is written, and this is going all the way back to the, the sixties, we, we did revise and updated, I think a year and a half ago. But the ordinance has stated that, um, from the property line to the back of the curb is typically the responsibility of the property owner, but that the city may choose to come in and maintain it, replace it, sweep it, whatever is deemed appropriate. But the primary responsibility has traditionally been on the adjacent property owner.
But the trees are ours, it says, to maintain, not the, not the property owner.
That's right.
Mayor and Council, thanks for remembering, uh, a few months back, you guys did approve the ordinance for the creation of the beautification committee. That'll go online in June, so next month you guys will bring your votes up so we can put that board together. And that's one of the main focuses of, of that group is going to be the downtown, because that beautification plan that we create for downtown is one of the things that we want to see, the things that are going to go downtown are the things we want to see spread out through the rest of the town. So that's going to be like our model, so we know what, what works and what's not going to work, so we can kind of spread that so the whole town kind of looks, you know, a nice uniform, clean, the same thing works. So, uh, me and Heather have been working on, on putting plans together. We're looking at how other communities have revitalized downtown, what they're doing, funding mechanisms to make it work. It's going to take participation from the business owners along with, uh, with chamber getting involved, you know, to create a plan. And once we get something going downtown, we can spread that out, you know, through the whole town. So just remember, as you're thinking about who to pick to put on that beautification committee, just make sure that they're, they're going to go along with the vision that you guys think about. And me and Heather invite, you know, Council to come, let us know, we'll go take a walk, uh, we'll see what's going on, we'll kind of see what ideas are. We'll talk to people and that's the thing we want to do, we want to talk to people, see what their ideas are, so we know what expectations are. Because it's not, it's not only what we want to happen, it's what, you know, the rest of the community wants to happen, so.
I hope the downtown people get more involved in this, and they have to, there is, this is the opportunity for them to have a say so.
Yes.
And not say that we're throwing it at them, we're not giving them an opportunity or anything there. So I challenge and invite downtown property owners, business owners to come and get involved.
And that's where we're going to come in, instead of waiting on them, we're going to go to them and approach them and see what their ideas are. We just have to have, you know, start it from scratch, build up our base and just, you know, keep going from there to see what we can do. So, I mean, that is something we're trying to look at. But we invite Council to be involved with us also, you know, and, and re, help us reach out, because that's the only way that a good partnership is going to be able to be formed.
And, and when we reach out to the downtown businesses slash property owners, we also have to keep in mind that some of these people do rent or lease that property. So if the property owning owner does get advised of something, it is up to that property owner to let their lease, leasing note about that.
And that's where we're going to get both parties involved, and there's multiple parties like that. We have to bring all stakeholders to the table. If they're the property owner, if they're the actual tenant, if they're, you know, even if it's the community member that lives on the south side of town, you know, we have to bring all stakeholders, involve everybody, so that way it, everybody's involved and everybody gets a say so.
We do have a ordinance kind of to protect what can be put up, what not, you know, just to, I guess, make it, I guess we're like a better phrase, overly extravagant. I don't know how else to put, you know, somebody that have.
Because the bumper, there's a, there's an ordinance that, uh, anybody building something new has to have their curb and gutter and ADA, they have to do that themselves, correct?
That's definitely part of the building program.
Okay. Now, of course, the people have been there, the properties have been there, that anybody new, building new, has to do those kinds of things as well.
The councilman, whatever we can do, if there's something, you know, let us know. Like I said, we, we've been trying to think about what we can do, build up, you know, the downtown area, because we're, like I said, what we want to see downtown is the basically what we want to incorporate through the rest of the town. Because when you go through other communities, you notice that all the areas kind of match.
Yep.
All of them, there's not, it's, it's, it's very cohesive in the mix.
And I do appreciate you saying that, Oscar, but I, like, a lot of people say, let's not compare Pecos to something else. Let's get the input from them, let's not compare to other places like Austin, apparently we're, we're trying to compare ourselves to. So, you know, let's.
No, it's going to be Pecos, it's going to be what Pecos wants, what the Pecos feels.
So that everybody feels like it's not, like we're trying to be somebody else.
And that's not our intention, it's not the intention to make it look like other towns, but we want to create that feel too where it's, it's one community, Pecos is one, and you see that the same thing throughout the whole town, but it's our town, it's what we want to see.
And the, uh, we get the ordinance, see what's allowed and not allowed, so they can see that, okay, we can go this way, but we can't go this way. And maybe they see as a, as a majority downtown owners, they say, well, we'd like to change this part of the ordinance. And if, and we, we all agree on it, they agree, we agree, we can visit that to accommodate everybody.
And there's funding mechanisms that I've researched, there's ways to create, uh, a, a district out of downtown, you know, to where we can make that stuff happen. But it's, we have to start from the bottom and build ourselves. from the bottom and build ourselves up there, but we have been looking at all ways that we can at least get something started, like I said, we do invite council to come and help us put something together, so...
Be sure when you approach the business owners, take them a copy of our bond that we want to pass, because it'll be helping them more than anything else.
Maybe they can help us spread the word, where they're going to.
Thank you.
Anything else, guys? Okay, we're going to F3, discuss, consider approval of the proposal of an amnesty month for offering a program to bring delinquent utility accounts to current status, Mr. Lino?
Mayor and council, Charles Lino, finance director, after discussions and taking a look, and I included a, an aging report that was voluminous in your all's package, and when you looked at it, and you probably saw that bottom line, which is what I took a look at, was a little over 2.3 million dollars, and we have a good aging report now, and we need to take action to get that collected, the city can't afford to have that much outstanding, and we did implement late charges and cutoffs just this past period with the billing that went out, and I have some good information to share with you, and it's the impetus for asking for this, in the two weeks, that report that I gave you is approximately two weeks old, in two weeks, because we put that on there and notified all of our residents of the cutoff, we collected $643,000 in two weeks. So our number is now down to 1.6, a little over, almost 1.7 million dollars, so we've, it had an impact, but with that being said, what we've discussed in our executive team, we want to offer a program to where if we get the delinquent accounts to come in and enter into a contract or a payment arrangement, or bring their accounts in full, that we would reverse the $40 cutoff fees and the $10 late fees for a period of time going back into 2020, so that it would give them an opportunity to bring their accounts current. We're revising the current agreement for payment plans with the city, my goal and my plan would be to offer three months, but dependent upon the account, if it's a very large amount, if they're on a fixed income, we will talk on a case-by-case basis and work with that customer to make sure that they can get their bill cut off, when we do enter into these payment arrangements, it's going to be an amount, a specific amount each month in addition to what their current charges are, so they have to hit those thresholds to not have their service discontinued or void that amnesty offer. Along with this, what we'd like to do is, there's a copy of a resolution that you all approved last year related to yard meters, we want to include as part of this amnesty month, the ability to offer yard meters again at that reduced rate, the benefit of a yard meter is it's not going to include your garbage service, it's not going to include sewer service, it's going to be for the actual amount of water that was used by the customer. So there's a couple of items that we want to look at, and my, what I'm asking for is to, if you all would allow us to do this amnesty period for the month, entire month of May, promote it, let our citizens know that we want to offer this program to try to bring, collect these outstanding funds. One of the other things that comes in that we want to bring you all up to speed on and notify you about, I'm going to have Kristen come up and talk about what's been going on with some of our meters, that we've, our brand-new meters that we've put in.
So, Kristen and I are deputy city manager, as you have in front of you, there is some paperwork there, we removed the address to be respectful, however, as we've been going through and replacing our meters, upgrading our system, Pecos has a huge amount of water theft, blatant water theft, people tampering with meters, our old meters, our new meters, it's a real problem, it affects everybody, everybody pays more because people are stealing water, quite plain, so this is just one example of what was discovered, and when we had contacted the customer to figure out, was there a problem, because the register's not reading, and they had tampered with it, and they admitted they tampered with it because they couldn't get water out of it, as opposed to calling us, as opposed to anything, we don't know how long they have been getting free water, so between the amnesty program and some other programs we're looking at, we're going to start sending out warning letters for people that we have the information that they are tampering with the meter, and we are going to start prosecuting, we're looking at a fee schedule, we're looking at with, if someone installs a water shut-off, if they start install, excuse me, the yard meter, we will offset some of that cost as a way to get people to understand the cost and what it is actually costing their community, but to help them with that cost of getting their yard meters installed, even at this discount, because we have a lot of theft, and it's getting to a criminal level, I can't even imagine, we have over almost $2 million of uncollected bills that Charles is diligently working on, but on top of that, the amount of theft, stolen meters, broken meters, altered meters, tampered with, people just hooking up to it and getting free water, it costs the community so much more because we have just a huge amount of those, so we're going to start cracking down, we're going to be sending warning letters as a courtesy, but if it keeps occurring, we will institute fines and prosecution because it is actually criminal vandalism. Thank you, any questions?
Did you say that you can tell, because they don't have, they don't have any water showing that they used any water at all?
There's a couple of things, there can show no consumption, there can show a drastic reduction in consumption, that we go and we investigate, we send out our meter readers when there's any kind of anomaly in the bill, we want to make sure there's not a problem, we're not going to go and attack anyone, we want to make sure that there's, you know, not an issue on our end if there's something going on, but people are messing with the registers, and they're either showing no consumption when they're getting free water, or reduced consumption, or different things that are going on, Seth can certainly expand on that, but...
And I know, give them, for when they sell the key for the water meter, so even if you lock them, they're going to open it.
We do have clips and pins, but they're being cut, they're being tampered with beyond just the key.
Just to talk about the meters real quick, we now have our new system in place, and we know when people are tampering with them, and so we realize that there's some instances where people may need to be able to access in order to turn off the water to their house, if they have a leak or something like that, one of the things that we're proposing as, as this program of having a fine in place, is that we would be encouraging people to install a shut-off valve on their side, it needs to be in a separate box, they should never, ever, ever be in our box, similar to TNT, they don't want you inside the box where the meter's at, you have your panel, and so this would be a similar situation where we would invite them to install their own shut-off valve on their side of the meter, so that they do not need to get into our box at any point in time, that way we can avoid the tampering, but it needs to be substantial enough that they understand that this is a criminal offense and it does have consequences, and so what we would recommend is that the cost of the plumber, or if they're homesteaders, they're able to do the work themselves, to do that shut-off valve would be deducted off of that fine, but we've thrown around the amount of $500, and that will maybe come back for final approval, so let's say it costs $300 to a plumber, we would only charge $200 this remainder of the fine if they're able to bring in their receipt, but the important thing is, is removing the excuse or the reason for them to be in the box, following 9/11, tampering with any part of the water system is now a federal offense, and people don't realize that, and we don't prosecute that, but they're messing with a system that has consequences, and we need to make sure that everyone's safe, we need to make sure that everyone's paying their fair share of this service, taxes do not go towards providing water or trash or sewer, it's paid by the service, and so we're trying to reduce and eliminate those free riders that are trying to receive this service for free.
Now, if they put a shut-off valve, can they do it right by the meter, or it has to be inside the property?
No, it can be right next to the meter, just can't be in the same box.
So now new properties are doing it, is required?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, the other way that we notice, council, the other way that we do notice when that's happening is if we've been getting, because in the example that you have here, the antenna, which is pulled off, as well as the meter pulled down, that antenna is the critical piece to our billing system, where we get electronic data to accurately bill all of the customers, and when we notice that we've been getting readings, and all of a sudden we don't get a reading, we have to send somebody out, and it's, you can't hide it, that is gone, or the meter lid has been broken over and that connection's been broken, we've had instances where we found where they were just pulled out and thrown on the ground, and, well, you can't read my meter that way, so, well, we can, but it's one of the issues that we've been discussing, that it is that, and it's impacting every single citizen in town who's not committing that.
And these are brand-new meters, too, these aren't even the old meters, this is happening with a brand-new meters.
They replaced the meters, but they replaced the box, and a lot of people have broken boxes, so they don't really need a lid because it still doesn't have a box for a lid, because I've noticed that as well, are we planning to go back and maybe replace some boxes that, so the lids can fit better?
Yes, sir, we are, and we are also moving to a new style of lid for this antenna in order to accommodate it, because it is at ground level, and there's lots of metal fences and lots of other things around here, and so we are going to a new style, if we know of an address that doesn't have one, we just need to know so that we can put in a service order and get one on there, because we definitely want lids on them.
A lot of people are on fixed income, you know, a lot of people are used to setting their own water heater up to fix, you know, I have a little problem, no, not a little, just I have a problem with it, some people, again, on fixed income, they can't afford a plumber, but they can do a little work themselves, and with a fine, they're setting off the valve, I find it hard to swallow, especially if I'm on a fine.
Well, the fine is not necessarily for setting off the valve, the fine is for any damage to the antenna, the meter, the...
But like, okay, so, example, I have a leak, I'll go pop the lid open, put the key from, I've noticed those keys, and I asked what time, what are these keys for, you know, shut off my own water, fix my leak, turn my water on, I'm not tampering with it, I'm not doing anything, on the contrary, just fixing what, you know...
And if none of that shows up, we would never know, to be honest with you, but as soon as that cord gets eaten a little bit of a, you know, cut in...
Because I know with us, for Texas Metro, if anybody pulls a meter, that meter sends an alarm to Texas City and Alvin, and it doesn't actually send somebody out, but there's a tampering, so that by the following business day, you know, we have to go check for tampering purposes, you know, and yeah, we've had that too, you know, people know how to pull that meter, so they can look, work on their breaker panel, whatever, you know, and also how to, people are ingenious and finding ways to bypass.
Yes, they are. And certainly along the same lines as I was talking about for the fine, you know, we would love to be proactive in this, and so if the council deems it appropriate to have a program specifically for those that are on fixed income or are unable to otherwise pay for it, we can do a program out of that, and we will probably still be ahead of, there's Charles, we will probably still be ahead of absorbing those costs, as long as we are recovering the lost water that people are flat-out stealing.
Now, that I understand, you know, that if there's federal offense and tampering in such a manner that destroys city property, then I often want for, you know, prosecuting this kind of a lot.
There's also a state law, bypassing a meter, water or electricity, it's a big crime. We're talking about going after, you know, civil authorities, just trying to...
So I think what we need to do is a bond application first, before we just shut it down your throat, so if you mention this, you're going to get, we know, people know that what they're not supposed to be mentioning is...
But you should go do some...
But they're going to say, well, you know, it was never specifically put out there, where's the information, that's the problem with the community and the city right now, that they say that there's no communication, that they didn't know, that they didn't see it, advertise, advertise, advertise.
The information, we've started the campaign, we've actually started slow, this will not go into effect immediately, we've put it on Facebook, we've sent it on Pecos Alerts, tampering with the meters, in fact, some of the business owners were talking about that in that last meeting when they were here, one gentleman was saying that he saw that, that we're going to be doing that.
So send them on flowers to the...
So...
And have a look to the...
We've started with that.
Customers, Spanish and English.
We have started an education campaign, because that's ultimately what we want to do, is educate the community, and that has included, like I said, Facebook and Pecos Alerts and whatever method on our website, whatever we can do to educate the community.
Let's not forget the news and radio, because we've been able to do, listen.
And I talked about that on coffee class, this is last week, not this week, the prior week I did talk.
You know what, they know they're doing it or not, you know, they know, we know, we're not that stupid, you know, so why do we avoid telling them, they know they're doing wrong, and if you catch them, you catch them, oh, they know they're doing wrong, you don't need to educate somebody if you go and take the meter off the water, you don't even, they know what they're doing.
We've had people come in who were very upset that we stopped them from stealing water, they were absolutely upset that we had replaced or fixed or did whatever, and then they came in and demanded to, you know, to get free water.
So I understand sending out the info saying, this is what's going to happen, that I understand, yes, definitely, but telling them, don't do it, they know what they're doing, you know, they know what they're doing.
They do, and part of this is that we are trying to benefit the community as a whole, so if someone has a legitimate concern and there's a misunderstanding, there's a fixed income, there's whatever, we will work with them, but they have to come in and talk to us, that is the issue that we have, if they don't come in and talk, same thing with bill shut-offs, if they come in and talk to us, if they call, if they make an effort to let us know there's something going on, do we work with them, they know they have instructions on how to handle those, if it escalates, it goes to Charles, it goes to me, we have worked with countless citizens because there has been specific personal issues they have going on, they can't pay this or can't pay that, we work with them, but they have to notify us.
See, now, knowing on the list that we're looking at, you have a lot of companies on there.
Is that a general...
Businesses.
Is that a list of all the council papers?
No, those are just the...
That's 100% of, that's everything, that's a list of everything, from utility billing to water. No, it's rolled over, it is rolled over, it's a cumulative amount that we did pull in from the migration from...
Okay, so this amnesty month is basically saying, you come in, the citizen has to come in to make arrangements, and you're going to take off the...
Late fee and the...
The late fee and the cutoffs that they have in place, it's a $40 cutoff anytime their meter's shut off, and $10 if when they pay a bit, or whenever it's past the due date each month.
Okay, and this is going to go from, what day, 2020?
Whatever you all suggest, I mean, I think we should go with probably all of 2020 and take a look at it to get these collected, if somebody historically has been paying their bill late every time, or just not, I mean, when it gets this big, they're just not paying their bill, okay, the, well, really what we should do is take it back to July, and the reason that we should is because it was moratorium, a governor's order that expired at the end of June, so we should take it back at least until July to show correlation So we should take it back at least until July to show correlation with something. It can't be further if you all choose to make it further.
I would say March, since that's when the governor shut down.
That's the first time it shut down. When I mandate was put out.
Because that's when everybody got sent home, all the work, the school kids got sent home, the employees got sent home. So everybody's consuming more water at that time.
Well, I just wanted to explain why this tampering thing is such a big deal on these new meters. So you've got that new meter, as water goes through it, there's an electrical cord that's connected to that meter. It sends a signal to the, what they call the M I U, which is in the lid actually. So when they bust these lids open, they're ripping these wires out. So then we have to go back and replace all that because they've destroyed it all. So that's why we're asking that they not be allowed in our meter boxes anymore. Because as soon as they, I mean, if you do it carefully, you can open the lid without tearing it up. Most people don't know that. And so they're just popping it open. So we have to go back and redo the whole thing.
No. In my time in Fort Stockton, when we had disconnection tampering, we'd go as far as pulling the meter and drop. First we'd pull the meter. And then somebody would drop by, hey, did you pull the meter over there? Yeah, they got lights. Next day we'd go cut the wire at the pole or, or at the riser at the house. Next day they have lights. Jesus Christ, they're tying in, so we'll cut it at the pole. And I've had ladies and men cuss at me and put dogs on me and, you know. Soon as I cut all the wire, they're like, oh, okay, that didn't work. So there's ways, you know, I mean, I don't know. I know we can cap it off, but how can we cap it off security if there's, if they're constantly tampering? To me it's like, ain't got no water. I don't care if you're an active gun, but you're stealing and it's, it's an offense. We're gonna cap it off, but we gotta find a way to cap it off to where they can't get a pipe wrench, come to the pipe and take that cap off. And those two, you know.
And part of the problem with them still being able to get in there is the fact that with this new system, it's gotta be a plastic meter. I mean, meter lid, so it's real easy to pop off. Some of them were retrofit in the middle of it with the plastic piece, but some of them were just putting a new plastic lid.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be in every new battle.
Yes.
And to address, Councilman Aron, one of the issues that you brought up earlier related to, let's just say we're dealing with a senior citizen that has a leak. Our new system should, once, if, if everybody's following the rules, we will get a notice a couple of days afterwards that it's excessive usage or volume and it's a constant flow. So we will be alerted of it. We can alert the resident at that time. Or if they notice it prior to us noting, finding that, they can call us, we can do a service order and that same day get their water shut off so they can work on it. If they're gonna do it themselves. It's not like it's gonna take a week to get their water shut off. We can do it the same day and accommodate them.
Not to throw rocks, but lately I've been hearing, again, you know, and this relates to a lot of things. Trash has been full again and people are howling at me at work. Nobody's answering phone calls at City Hall. Nobody's answering phones, you know. We're not responding, so, you know, again, to start a story, but that's what, that's what I'm getting, I'm part of it on the phone personally at work and other areas where I'm at, that nobody's answering their phones here at City Hall. Or nobody responds to complaints of issues, you know, so I'm just delaying what.
We are looking, the problem is it's not that people aren't answering, it's that everybody's answering all the time. So, and phone, calls are bouncing because someone's on the line or, and they're not necessarily bouncing directly to voicemail. We're looking at rerouting, especially U B calls, to have a dedicated voicemail that someone will be accountable to pull that twice a day. Charles is already setting that up internally and I T is finishing up a project this week. But that is our next major focus, is making sure that we are able to get the information and respond timely. We've streamlined internal, when he's talking about work orders, we've streamlined an entire, excuse me, internally, an entire process with that where we have assigned accountability and ownership. It's no longer, it goes here, it goes there, it goes here. Did it get done? This person's out, I don't know. We have internally resolved a lot of that. It's taking a while because we're transitioning from an old manual system to a new, more efficient system. And we're putting more people into that process so that we are setting that up. So we've started with work orders and they no longer just, you know, there's no follow-up, there's no anything. It'll sit there for a week or it doesn't get entered, it was handled right away, but it doesn't get entered for a week. So we've had those issues in the past between systems and manpower. So we've put things in place where work orders are addressed, entered, they are scheduled, and they are resolved. So that is a, a big change and improvement in how we're handling that internally. We're looking internally for whatever we can do to improve our phone systems. We've added more people who are on the initial ring. We have something like twelve people. It, when it rings into our main line, it goes to twelve different lines at the same time. It's just that we're limited staff. We are doing everything we can. U B, especially utility billing, when we wanna transfer down to them, they can have someone at the window, they can have somebody at the drive up, they can have somebody on the phone, they're sharing the space with court. So it does create that, certainly creates that perception that they're not answering the phone. But they're not answering the phone is because they're swamped. So we are looking at everything we can do to improve internal customer service. And one of those methods will be setting up a dedicated voicemail box. And I know it was done before, but we have accountability. People will know twice a day, this is when they go and pull. Or if they have to have time during the day, they will go and pull the voicemail, they will document it, they will make sure it's addressed. We'll be calling the customer within twenty-four hours at the latest. So we're, as soon as I T is finishing up a major project, that's next on the bill for them.
And as far as the yard meter program, uh, the last time we did it, I think, Seth, did we allow, for those that weren't able to pay the whole two fifty at that one time, did we allow them to break up those payments?
We did, we allowed a three payment.
Is that, are we still gonna be able to do that for this?
Yes, I, I would recommend that we just do it exactly the same as we did last year.
Mestimated, do you know how many people we got to sign up or to actually install yard meters the last time?
I think it was under ten.
Under ten, okay.
Very few purchased.
So this, once approved, of course, when will this start?
It'd be for the month of May. The entire month of May, the same as the amnesty program is what I would recommend. Although last year we did it for six months. If you all choose, we can take it for six months, beginning with May and run it through the end of November.
The point of the accountability and honestly, of the ultimately prosecution against that point is when we find these things, we're sending warning letters. We are letting you know, here's a picture, here's a documentation, the meter's been tampered with. It has been fixed, it's been replaced. However, here's the next steps if it reoccurs. So we are giving them an opportunity to, you know, respond and to realize we are now looking at all this because it costs the community. So we're not just gonna go start and spining everybody, we are gonna send warning letters. And we started the process of notifying the community and we will keep doing that, especially we'll run it along with the amnesty.
Are we certifying these letters, Christian?
Certifying as far as sending them by? Um, we can, it's an expense, but we can do that. And it's, I don't know how many we're gonna find, so, I mean, you're talking two to three dollars per letter, give or take. But we can send it by a signed certification. Yeah, absolutely. If it becomes a second or a third offense, we would absolutely send that by certification. But we can do the warning letters that way as well. That way there's a signature.
Let's say that we do go by Mr. Lino's one month timeframe that the, the yard meters are able, uh, somebody's able to sign up for a yard meter. If, let's just say they get overwhelmed and they have more than, this time we get more than we have. Can we allow people that did sign up in that month, even though they were not set up that month, still have that? Like, let's just say somebody signed up in, on May the fifteenth, but a hundred people signed up before him and they're gonna get to them first, right? They're still going to, what was that, I'm looking for.
I, I think we would honor the.
Yeah, honor.
Councilwoman, last year, we, if I'm remembering correctly, we didn't actually charge them until we went to go do the work. So we put them on a list, we had them sign up. But we didn't actually charge them until we did the work. If I'm remembering correctly, we've done it here.
That's what I just wanna make sure, that if somebody did sign up or does wanna get one and, you know, May thirty first comes around and they haven't gotten installed, you know, they're still going to be.
No, it's, it's based on as long as they're signing up during that timeframe, we'll still honor whatever. We need to.
So we think a month, every yard meters, stay with that? Every year?
Start in spring, it'll be some work.
That's when everybody starts planting and gardening and watering.
I'll pay that meter.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr..
Any other questions?
What about those people that are questioning their bill and we're telling them, well, we'll look at it, dah dah dah? Will we be able to say, well, we're not gonna shut you off till we figure out if there's something wrong?
Yes, sir, and we do, we do that, Mayor. If there's, if, if we notice that there's high consumption and they call in and question it, we do put them on a, on a no cutoff list for a period of time. And we do have that capability. We are monitoring, I'm working on educating our staff to make sure that we are following up on those because we don't want somebody to be put on a no cutoff reason because we had a discussion with them and that they realize that, well, I'm not gonna get cut off so I don't have to pay my bill. So we are monitoring that proactively now.
Thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
May I make a motion to approve this? The role of a holder of the amnesty month for offering a program to bring the liquidated utility counts to a current status presented by Finance Director Charles Lynn.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Aron, second by Councilor Saldana, to approve the proposal of the amnesty month for offering a program for liquidating the utility counts to current status. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lino. Discuss considered purchase of twenty, thirty yard roll-off containers for the water equipped in, in the amount of one hundred four thousand, one hundred twenty-four dollars by Mr. McKenney, please.
Mayor, Council, thank you for this opportunity. I'm Donnie McKenney, Director of Environmental Services. Just as a reminder, back in July last year, we voted to make Towne-Pecos City an exclusive franchisee for roll-offs. So basically, inside the city limits, we're the only ones that can rent the roll-offs now. And I'm coming into a problem now of not having enough of them because the demand's starting to rise. I've got four right now that aren't rented out and I'm holding those back for the cleanup next weekend. So I, for all intents and purposes, really have none that I can rent out, so. I'm gonna have to let some other companies come back inside the city until I can get some more cans. So that's why we're asking to buy twenty new roll-offs at five thousand dollars apiece for a total of one oh four, four twenty-four. That's includes the shipping, so. This program's been well received. I have no doubt we'll make the money back as we rent these things out. It's just a matter of, we gotta put out the money upfront to purchase them.
On the same lines as this, just, you know, we took off those, you know, when we started with the problem with the trucks and put those four roll-offs for areas of the city. We picked the amount points thirty first. I think we did continue that practice again, saw the dumpsters full again, you know. And people are complaining and rightfully so. You pay for a service and we're not delivering. So I know it's, it's a bit to go out of your way, your dumpster's full, but there's a roll-off that, you know, about eight blocks, ten blocks away from where you live. At least you gotta pitch a move. So just, what I'm seeing is people just packing it and then night of the day it's open, they're still piling it up, piling it up, you know. And I have people complaining that, hey, the dumpster's in my, in the back of my yard. My neighbors are throwing it and it's still full in their yard, the trash goes in my yard, you know. And again, like I say, you know, we, we charge a service, we're not providing the service on time, add it with it. We gotta find a solution to this.
Well, for the last month and a half, we haven't been behind.
This week, Donnie, this, last week and this week, I've seen dumpsters thrown down.
Well, you're right, they get full, but we're not behind, we're going through as we should.
I'm not talking about different dumpsters, I'm talking about the same dumpster. In a whole week and a half, I've seen them not being in. So, you know, maybe it's my fault, I should tell you guys, I'd say, hey, what's the problem with this? It's, it's full and it's been full for, and it should've been picked up.
And, and I'm not saying we haven't missed a dumpster, but we have had trucks recently, so it shouldn't be a problem with the trucks.
Councilman, if we can get that address.
And, and we had talked about leaving those out there, but again, I don't have any I can leave out when people are paying for them.
No, on those, on those, we can eventually, you know, go and put it out these roll-outs that we can have a place.
I mean, once I get some more inventory, I've got no issue putting them back out there. And we had actually discussed that in some of our staff meetings about going ahead and leaving them out longer. But I just don't have the ones to leave out right now.
And I come in on this, on this proposal, you know, and make money for the city on this, this lot of the trash code, huh?
Are those red ones ours?
The red ones are not, all of ours are tan.
There's also red ones.
And I've got code enforcement working on telling them that those are gonna have to go. But again, I can't make them get rid of those until I have one I can replace it with.
Well, like, like what you just said earlier about you might have to let some private companies come in to fill the void until we get that situated. When we're going through a trash problem, I reached out to those cities and some of them say they, they have a private company on standby whenever they run into problems of such sort. You know, where we can't get the trash because of trucks being down or lack of personnel or whatever. And they have a company.
There's a back.
As a back, as an agreement as needed, you know. And they'll come and not even haul the trash, they haul it to their own, their own private areas.
And I know Republic's out in this area, we could probably talk to them about.
There's one out of Elkhorn, I forgot the name, but there's one out of Elkhorn that does Fort Stockton, that's who. So your manager reached out to me, he said, man, this is who we use when we have problems here.
T D S.
Did he have death fit?
Traffic disposal service. Our, our only issue that we would have to make sure is not a lot of people use our style of trash.
If that's what they, they use for the trucks.
That they use the same type.
But it's something to think about in case in the future we have that issue again and, you know, I hate to see it go back to what it was.
I would like to say that's not gonna happen. I'm trying to plan for that not to happen.
Well, I hope we don't get another.
I'm sorry?
How many drivers do you have?
Five.
Okay, so we're doing good on drivers?
We're doing fine on drivers, ma'am.
I hope we never get a snowstorm like we got there. But it can happen again.
And that's exactly what happened, that snowstorm piled on the fact that some of our trucks, so we, even if we had had trucks, we couldn't get in some of those alleys for a while. So it just kept piling and kept piling, so.
Donnie, we have the money?
We do have the money. We have money in our capital outlay program for the solid waste that we can take it out of to pay for it.
So what's the rent for a four inch dumpster or a roll-off?
Basically what we're doing right now, and we're gonna revisit this when we redo master fees, because we're charging a fifty dollar set fee, a fifty dollar pickup fee, and then whatever the weight that's in the container when we haul it to the landfill. Much cheaper than anybody else will do it anyway, so.
You're not charging per day?
We are not charging per day.
How, you can't fill it up in a day, right?
No, how many do you have it? You used to.
We used to.
We, yeah. And we were starting to get into the unaffordable range for regular citizens. I mean, the businesses, it wasn't beginning, but we wanted to bring it back down to where citizens could afford to rent these things, so.
Mayor and Council, from the money standpoint that you asked about, we have in our current operating budget that was approved in the last, last year by Council, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars and this is about a hundred and four, so it's not even impacting capital as much. It will be a capital expenditure, so it will not impact the operating side of it. But it, it will come initially out of operating costs.
Any other questions, Seth?
Do they come with those little reflectors or do you have to put them on yourself?
I'll have to look back at the quote, I mean, we can.
Because I think there's one down Iowa that I don't think I see reflectors and it's pretty dark over there behind the high school.
Oh, yeah, that one right there, under the trees.
The ones we currently have, if they don't have reflectors, I'll make sure they, we get some and we can request that the company, when they ship them to us, put those reflectors on.
Any other motion, Ted?
I think the motion we approved the purchase of twenty, thirty yard roll-off containers from Waste, Waste Quigling in the amount of one hundred four thousand, four hundred twenty-four thousand dollars presented by City Hall Officer Donnie McKenney.
Second. Motion by Councilman Saldana, second by Councilman Aron, to approve purchase of three yard roll-off containers for the water equipped in the amount of one hundred four thousand, four hundred twenty-four dollars as presented. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries.
Mayor, Council, thank you.
Thank you, Donnie. Okay, there, any reason to go to executive session?
No, my good friend, I'm, I'm, there was a request for executive.
There is? Okay. Uh, we're going to go into executive session under Texas Government Code five-five-one-nine-zero-seven-one, five-five-one-nine-zero-seven-two, five-five-one-nine-zero-seven-four, five-five-one-nine-zero-eight-seven. Time is six forty P.M.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, did you open it?
Yes, sir.
Mayor and council, I am very sad to say that I feel that my time in Pecos has come to a close. I have tendered my resignation effective May 28, 2021. I have loved Pecos, I have loved the opportunities that my family has been given here and the blessings that we've received by coming to this community. There are so many opportunities here. There's a reason why we're the number two micropolitan in the entire United States. There's a reason why Pecos has so many opportunities to grow and to become the kind of community that you want to become. But I do feel that it's my time to move on. I have the opportunity to be close to my parents as they are getting on in years and have the opportunity to relocate just a few hours from then. I thank you all for my opportunity to be here and the opportunity to serve the citizens of Pecos, and I thank you all. Thank you.
Well, thank you for being here with us. It was quite a ride, let me tell you. Quite a ride. And you made it happen. You and your staff made it happen. We will try to continue what you started, and hopefully we will. Thanks again.
Thank you.
I wish you well in your endeavors and your new career. I know you'll do great. You and I had a lot in the beginning, still have differences, but I think we came to terms, and all I do is wish you the best, okay? If you ever decide to come back.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for the stuff that you did for us, that we hired you to do. Thank you so much, we appreciate it. We love you and your family.
And I bless you and your family.
Thank you very much.
And of course, you're my first city manager, so I'd have to prepare you.
I'm the best one and the worst one.
But as far as I'm concerned, do I have any problems? Never have. Any issues? Never have. You know, you've done a lot to teach me what I needed to know, which sometimes people get to learn on your own as you vote, which you chose not to do that. You accepted a lot of things that the council threw at you. You know, you took it and you ran with the best that you could, which, you know, not a lot of people do that. I think that the city is going to miss you. Whether they believe it or not, you have done a lot for this city. You know, you have, you have, you know, as a mayor, I don't know, I don't know what other mayors do when, when, when we get hit with COVID for a whole year, then we get hit with something else, and then water, and then trash, and then...
Snow.
Snow, you know, three below or below three degrees, whatever it was. You know, I thought it was different. I know there's responsibility, yes. It will never compare to your responsibility. I know a lot of people here will miss you. I know that you are leaving with a heavy heart. I know that because I can see it. Of course, I don't want you to go, so if something is said, don't wish him the best, but, you know, you'll always have a place in Pecos regardless. If you're the city manager or body passant, you know, we'll give you the key to the city because you've, in my heart, you've deserved it, in my mind, you've deserved it, you've earned it. So, you know, there's only, there's not enough words to express everything you've done for us, whether, like I said, whether people see it or not, because sometimes a lot of it is done behind the scenes. You, you dealt with no money, you know, when we had money, to no money, and you pulled it off with minimal layoffs, which we had discussed more, you know, knowing that. So, so we're grateful for everything you've done. You know, and we truly miss you, and hopefully that you will come back and see us sometime.
Thank you very much. Certainly cannot do it without the wonderful staff that actually is the one that gets things done, that's the support of the council. So, thank you very much.
I mean, we're coming for the first ball, first game.
Still working out the schedule on that one, but that's my hope.
For some reason, you like the snow up north. Come back to the desert.
I don't want to keep the snow here.
We're going to the G, discuss the next city council agenda. Anything y'all just want to adjourn?
I do want to see if we can bring the criteria for the revolving loan funds. I want to see if we can change something on that. And the criteria for the, what is it, the RFP? Or, or...
RFP.
That one.
For bids?
When requested, yes, bids. That. I'm sure we'll find a better one.
What the criteria is.
Do you really want to vote on it?
Yeah, but I want to, I want to go back to the...
Yes, we can discuss. Discuss some issues, whether we have it or change up, whatever we need to, what we need to do.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. All those who say aye, motion adjourned.
Mine was here those days.
We're still alive, guys.
Oh, yes, it's different.
I know.
You know, we ain't gonna do it, man. Shit, take care of it.